I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We've been in closed session talking about legal matters. I'd like a motion to return us from the recess that we took.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now can I have roll call, see if we're all in here?
Hurney?
Here.
Suter?
Here.
Crabtree?
Here.
White?
Here.
Mather?
Here.
Elmore?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here. Now we'll hear the invocation brought by the Reverend Chris Thornton from Harbor, Sabre.
Father, we just call upon you today. We come before you thankful, pray over our nation and over our city, so desperately need you in many measures. Pray God for the nation of Nepal that have lost people today, lives and loved ones. We pray God that you would just comfort in their loss. Help us God to continually, always offer up thanks and be a thankful people. Pray Lord that you just govern over our deliberations tonight, direct us, I pray. Let us be led of you, Father. We ask these things in the lovely name of Jesus. Amen.
And if you'll join me in the prayer. I pray my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we move to public comments. And I'll start, let's see, on the back in the left. Come forward this way. Anybody over there have something that they'd like to address council about?
Here we are again. Okay. I'd like to bring counsel up on the matter of the Route 66 signs and stuff like this out on Elm Street or changing it over. Since this has all happened, we've kind of sent it to building and zoning, brought it back, did different things with it, but we've been actually on this now over three months. And I'll give you a little of the latest. On March 18th, Kathy Dame and Mark Spangler and myself met with the mayor and we picked out the sign design. And at that time, I was willing to pay for all of the signs. And Kathy said, no, that she didn't like that idea, that it would be a great project for the Route 66 society, she thought. So we had a meeting. And the board meeting was on March 25th and it was at the boardroom. And most of the board members are actually here sitting tonight as they thought we was going through this. Special guest was Mr. Anderson. And in a way, I'll just read you the part that we had as the minutes to our meeting. Howard explained to the board that he had approached the city hall and the mayor regarding the renaming of Elm Street as Route 66. Howard offered to pay for the signs from his own pocket. Judy made a motion seconded by Cliff that the society paid for the initial cost of the signs, which would cost approximately $1,500. Replacement and maintenance would be responsibility of the mayor. The motion passed. Mayor Anderson suggested that in the interim measure, there could be dual signs posted, Elm Street and historic Route 66. Howard said that that was not acceptable to him. On July 13th, 1998, House Bill 948 was signed into law and become effective as of the 28th of August, 1998. The law reads, "All highways, roadways and proportions thereof within the state which constitutes the original U.S. Highway 66 as determined by the Missouri Department of Transportation shall be renamed Route 66 with all proportions which constitute the original U.S. Route 66, and no political subdivision can designate it otherwise." That's just across the state. Everyone's in the same boat. Howard said he wanted Elm Street renamed Route 66 because he believed it was in the city's best interest to do so. Recognizing and accepting Route 66 as a street name can only benefit tourism, traffic, and every business owner. He talked to along the street has expressed support for that change. Mayor Anderson said that such a request would have to have passage of a city ordinance, okay? And he would be putting such a request on the agenda. He said that it would be within the next few weeks. Last time when you met, you had the electric and different things going. So we said that was okay. And to let us know as the members, so that we could show support for the change. I don't see it on the agenda tonight. So apparently, I can ask the mayor now, will it be on the May 11th agenda? Because tourism season is already starting and we're getting deeper into it before we get started. So will it be on the next agenda?
I can't tell you if it'll be on the next agenda, but we'll have a work session between now and then and we will discuss it at that time.
It will be on that work session?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's what we wanted to go. We did not want to go into some sort of carnival or circus. It's best to just talk to the people involved. We thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this side have something they'd like to say to council? Moving to the right front. Is there anybody over here that would like to address council tonight? Eric, you have anything you want to say? And we'll move to discussions and presentations. And it says none, but on my notes in my scribble, it says study session. A council member has suggested that we move the study sessions, move our bodies up here for the study sessions as opposed to out there being around the table. I do not personally like that suggestion because the idea that this council member used was that people cannot hear. Well, it's true also that people do not come to our study sessions. We discuss very little amongst ourselves anyway, and we are better able, I think, to talk around the table out there. I would commit to getting some more microphones out there, so if there is somebody here, you can, we can pass those around and be heard. I would like council to give me some guidance between now and wake the next Thursday as to how you want to be conformed and also the C.A. and his assistant will not be here that night. So I would like, this would be a good opportunity for grab bag. I'd like you to tell me between now and the study session, what you'd like to talk about.
I'd say I get some remote mics.
Pardon?
Remote microphones.
Will we? We'll put some portable, like that microphone right there.
Whatever works, yeah.
You like out there?
I really do like it out there.
That's my feeling.
Yeah. It's more conducive to conversation if we're facing each other.
But we do want to, when someone does show up, we want them to be able to hear.
Us to hear them, them to hear us.
We're informal enough, if someone needs us to repeat something, I don't have a problem in doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Again, if you tell me the kind of thing, we will talk about Route 66 versus Elm Street. And if you'll tell me any other subjects that you'd like to talk about, we'll try and do so. Next item on the agenda has to do with an appointment to the library board. There is a vacancy that will occur on July 1. An existing library board member has opted not to serve again. It was a valuable board member and they feel the loss. But I have talked to Marie Waddell about this job. She has talked to Kathy Dame at the library about that job. She's attended some library board meetings to familiarize herself with the proceedings. You have and have had for several weeks her application, so I would like to nominate her for that position and I'd like a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Hurney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
And a fireworks permit. Would you speak to that, chief?
Yes, this is the annual USO motorcycle support ride. It'll be on June, the 20th. It'll begin at Ozark Harley-Davidson. It will go on the outer road and around the roundabout, take Route 66 all the way through Lebanon, and then it will take the outer road to a sleeper.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any specific warrants that anybody'd like to talk about?
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Hurney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
And a fireworks permit. Would you speak to that, chief?
Yeah, the Lebanon Family Church is asked to do a fireworks show in July. They'll be using commercial grade fireworks that anybody can buy at any of the local outlets that pop up throughout the county. They've supplied all the appropriate paperwork, they have the appropriate distances, and they have the liability insurance coverage of a million dollars. We need your approval tonight for them to move forward. The other, only other hang up they might have is if on inspection day, there's some problem that they can't pass the inspection, but I don't anticipate that, and I think they have a good show planned out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Hurney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
And a fireworks permit. Would you speak to that, chief?
Yeah, the Lebanon Family Church is asked to do a fireworks show in July. They'll be using commercial grade fireworks that anybody can buy at any of the local outlets that pop up throughout the county. They've supplied all the appropriate paperwork, they have the appropriate distances, and they have the liability insurance coverage of a million dollars. We need your approval tonight for them to move forward. The other, only other hang up they might have is if on inspection day, there's some problem that they can't pass the inspection, but I don't anticipate that, and I think they have a good show planned out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Hurney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Second reading. Council Bill 4076. Seven members at least in the last six months have expressed awareness that electric rates need to be increased. For two years, we've been talking about how those electric rates will be increased. We've introduced the concept of service availability, and that has become a subject of conversation and dispute. In the last two weeks, I have talked to 28 providers of electricity. Of those 28 providers, 22 have service availability in their electric charge. Now, I know that it's a bad argument to say, we should do it because everybody else does it. But if everybody else is doing it, does that not imply that it's a pretty good idea? I'm open for further discussion.
I've got a question. This is up for second reading. Wasn't this bill defeated at our last meeting?
No.
It failed for lack of a motion, didn't it not? Always in the past.
It was not.
Lack of a second in the past.
Huh?
Lack of a second.
Well, this didn't even get a motion.
Right.
So it failed, right?
It wasn't acting part of the study.
So it should fail.
If you got it first and didn't get a second, then it fails for lack of a second.
Where do you come up with that at?
It's out of Robert Truel's order.
It never was laid on the table for consideration. So if something can't fail...
It was laid on the table. I mean, he asked for a motion.
But he never got one. And so it was never laid on the table for consideration. If it had a motion and then it was seconded, then it didn't get the obligatory second to continue discussion, but it wasn't even motion to be laid on the table for seconded for discussion. So no action. And it's a tentative agenda, so, I mean, so it was not postponed, it wasn't tabled indefinitely, it was, there was no action on it. That's why all of them were back.
Well, I can see the rest of them coming back because they're first and second. They can be brought back anytime on a first.
Not, no, that they can't. I mean, that's, I mean, they weren't even first. There was no action.
Well, then, therefore, you can bring them back anytime. So I don't have a problem with those.
But the first, but they were...
Okay. All right. I'll not argue it with you.
I have a question, or I need some clarification as I analyze the good work that city hall has put together. If you, and it's on the percentages. I know we don't like to talk about percentages, but one business, the Lebanon Mall, is going to get a 1% increase, and I noticed Mr. Suter's office and the State Mill will be getting 30% increase. I think that's, I need some clarification there. Now, you know, I'm having a little trouble with that. It's... There's a big discrepancy. Well, it's Mr. Suter's house, it's not his office. All right, his house.
My house is REA, mayor.
Hmm?
My house is REA.
Oh, really? Well...
Bill, I mean, I'm feeling this is going to be another matter of discussion for a work session, but one of the things, and I just want to make sure, just so there's pure clarity, when we, when we flatten the rates, I mean, the idea of this ordinance was to add on the service availability, shrink the energy cost, right, and deal away with the winter rates. So when you see an energy increase, that is the effect of the physical price per unit that they're paying on the energy. Some businesses that have got a winter discount for, since then in existence, and they no longer get that, their bill will be going up the same amount. It's just, it's not on their energy because they're just going to lose that discount. So the actual effect of their bill will increase, and again, the difference between, this bill is an 11% increase. I mean, that's because it totals back to $2.8 million, which is 11% increase.
I doubt the State Mill will agree with you.
So, but, yeah, but it is, because in the State Mill, theirs, I'm very familiar with what theirs is, so, but anyways, that's, just for the clarification, I just want, the clarification is the winter rate, doing away with the winter rate discount is one of the cost considerations. So that's why when you look at the energy side, it is, there is different percentages because some folks are getting a discount that shouldn't be getting a discount.
Does Mr. Suter agree that it's 11% across?
I didn't, I didn't say it was 11% across. I said this rate is 11%. So, but I, I mean, I...
Okay. Anybody else?
I've never been fond of this from the beginning, and everybody knows that, but the information that was sent out this last week or so, when you actually put names on these businesses, and I can walk downtown and say, this place or this place or this place is going to get a 25 or 30% increase, I think the 11% looked pretty good a long time ago now. And I'm inclined to think that even less than that looks good. I could not face these people and give them a 30% increase. I can't do it. And I don't see how anybody up here, after seeing, actually in black and white numbers put on places of businesses, I don't know, I just, I can't see it. I just can't see it.
Can I just make a point on that?
Sure.
That's what the mayor sent out, what the mayor sent out was a single bond, and obviously this, and I understand your point, but, I mean, the ordinance is an annualized basis, so just for, again, that's just a point of clarity.
Mayor?
Yes.
I reviewed the information I received Thursday night, and whether or not this is one month, or whether it's a monthly average or annual, I don't know. But the information that I received shows a small user getting a 17% increase for someone at the lower end of our residential consumption. I'm going to generalize here and talk about what I'm going to call Commercial Street. Those rates go up anywhere from 25 to 32%. If you move out onto Jefferson Street, and I'm going to generalize there and not refer to particular businesses, the rates go up from 2% to 4%. A number of our larger businesses and industries seem to be paying a 9% increase, which is about where I think we need to be. One of our heavy industries is getting tagged anywhere from 20 to 30%. I don't know why the example that we received is wrong, but I'm sure not about to accept
I was expecting some discrepancy in the neighborhood of 4% to 5%, but 1 to 32% seems to be a very big discrepancy.
Mayor, I've got something else to say, and I know some of the council people don't agree with me on this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Our budget this year is about $25 million as far as what we're going to receive in electric revenue. Of that, we're going to take out $1,750,000 and put it in a general fund. This $2,860,000 that you're wanting us to vote on right now, 160,000 of that's going to come out and go to the general fund, and we're telling the people out here it's for , by electricity. I don't think we're telling them the truth. And I've talked about this several times. If you tell me that this is brought up by ordinance to do it this way, change the ordinance. The state, when they audited us several years ago, told us that we was not to use the electric fund or the water fund to help the general fund, and we're doing it.
As is every other municipality in the states that sells electricity.
Well, if we put that $2 million back into where it's supposed to be for the electric use, we wouldn't need but about a $4 or $5 increase on everybody's bill. That's a lot better than $25 or $15.
And how do you anticipate paying for your...
I will not vote to do that if I would take the money out and do it.
I didn't anticipate that you would vote for it.
Put down a motion.
I know. Can I have a motion? Let's put this.
Let's decide this one way or the other. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do. I'll go ahead and say something. What surprises me is we spent a lot of work sessions, and everybody up here was in them, including Mr. White, because he was in the audience, and very little, I mean, this was a compromise that was brought up by Mr. Suter. This was his compromise, and now I don't understand how it changes. And I keep hearing like, let's do the 11%. And I get letters and emails from people that say, oh, that will hurt the small, you know, residential people. You're right, it will. It will hurt them worse than this will. This will at least make it better for those, and I, I think 11% is what I've heard bantered around, and that's worse for your lower income people. So I think we need to be really careful. This was a compromise that was brought up not by our staff, but by us as the council, where we, six out of eight of us at that time agreed to it. And we're on record as agreeing to it. So I don't know why we keep coming up as far as the second reading and then we change our minds again and...
Well, this was voted down the first time, 8-0, unanimous.
Not this one.
Oh, but the $2, that's about the only thing that changed on it. There wasn't much change on it. There's been a little bit, but not much.
No, because the first one was just service availability.
And I think part of what the difference is, I mean, like I said, I've been opposed to it all along.
True.
Everybody knows that. But when I saw what was written, then it meant a lot more than looking at a chart up there with green and yellow and purple colors on it and say, well, this rate pays this much and this rate pays that much. When you put names and faces and you really see the real picture, it makes a big difference, I think. It makes a big difference.
Let's get off of business this, though, and look at people, too. Put more names and faces to those, and Grandma Sue is going to pay off a lot more paying 11% than she is today.
Not according to what Mayor Anderson sent out. Well, we just do what's fair for everybody, even where everybody pays the same. Wouldn't that be the fairest way to do it?
Well, it won't affect you personally. It will affect me personally.
Well, I don't think we should look at this from a personal basis.
Well, I mean, I'm talking for lower income people because I don't make a whole lot of money, that's for sure.
Well, if we leave the $2 million in the fund to start with, we won't, it'll make it a lot easier for everybody.
I ask you again, how are you going to have police and fire without the amount of firepower? Can I have a roll call?
I'm going to put a kink in this.
I'm sorry?
So I'm going to put a kink in this. In order to pass this, there actually needs to be an amendment to the language in the paragraph that talks about the city rate, because the written cent, it says seven cents and the numeric number is eight cents. I think someone from the council brought it to the attention of us. Was it you, Mr. Jordan?
I'm moving.
At the last meeting, that there was no formal amendment to the language.
Can we correct that?
Pardon me?
What we need to do to correct it?
Yeah. It's supposed to be eight cents.
Yeah, it is. Should be more than that, probably.
So, yeah, I'd like to have a motion and a second for that amendment.
I make a motion.
Second. Okay, can we have a roll call on both, any amendment?
This is where the amendment. Wheeler?
Yes.
Hurney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
All right, now we can do the roll call on the first reading, or excuse me, second reading. That would be Hurney?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
No.
White?
No.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
All right, now we can do the roll call on the first reading, or excuse me, second reading. That would be Hurney?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
No.
White?
No.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
No.
Council Bill 4076 has failed, and we're back to the drawing board again. We move first and second readings. Council Bill 4081, final plat on the Ozark Cola subdivision.
This is kind of self...
Uh, this is kind of self-explanatory. This is Coca-Cola bottling company property. They have replatted and possible sale of the property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Need a second?
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second, second. Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second's a second. Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, do you want to know what's going in there?
Yes.
And it is, can you tell us or not, or?
Is that the one that we sit around?
Okay.
That's down the aisle here.
No, it's Elmore.
I thought you said that in depth.
No, not in depth.
Okay. Council Bill 4082 is passed and is ordinance 5334. Council Bill 4083, purchase an outdoor warning siren. Chief?
Okay.
Um, I believe all of you received my staff informational sheet regarding the storm siren in question. A year and a half ago, I was asked to look at the storm siren systems, and we made some radio changes. And in that, I discovered that three of our radio sirens are extreme, uh, storm sirens are extremely old. This is the oldest one of the three. I've provided a couple of coverage maps for you to look at and see the difference between the existing and the new recommended siren. One question that was raised through my staff informational sheet, none of our storm sirens have any type of power backup whatsoever. None of them. It's been that way since they were designed. The only information that I can find is that nobody considered it, for whatever reason. And we've operated that way since 30 or 40 years now. I did recommend that we purchase this siren with a backup system, and that we begin the process of putting a power backup system on all of our sirens. The information was provided in my informational packet. That'll cost us around $63,000, depending on how we want to phase that in. And about every three to four years, you're looking at $7,000 to $8,000 to replace the batteries in all of those sirens, and that is recommendations from the vendors. If you decide to continue with the system as it is, you'll need to amend the ordinance to purchase the siren for just over $11,066. And we will install that if you so wish to move that direction. The siren I'm replacing is at G3 Boats. It is the oldest. It's been working. It's been working fine the last three or four months. It is the oldest siren, and it is the one that has caused us the most problems in the last nine to 10 months. Although they weren't critical failures, it did have some issues. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir?
How long will it take to make the new siren operational?
Delivery is eight to 10 weeks. And then, Richard Chocley's Electric Department, they've agreed to install it, and it'll just get on their schedule around that timeline. Takes about a day to install one.
What would have, what would have to happen in order for that to be needed? What would, would just part, one of our substations go down, or?
Well, it could be a number of reasons.
Does it have to be ShowMe that goes down? Because it's my understanding that if one or two of our stations go down, that we still supply power around the city due to the loop. Richard, that's probably free to answer.
Well, we... It's kind of like the house, your house. The one circuit is fed off a breaker. If we have an interruption on that, the, for all purposes, the breaker flips. If there's a, if there's an issue where we can't energize that circuit again, we will, we will do some switching to backfeed it. It doesn't have an automatic, it's, it's all manual, if that answers your question.
So, people would have to come in?
Yeah. So, we would lose power and to, if it was feeding this siren, then the power would be lost until operators got back, you know, service crews got in and done the switching.
Okay. The other thing that, simply not just losing power from ShowMe, Mr. Elmore, is a thunderstorm comes in before the tornado and blows the line down, go into an individual siren or one or two different sirens throughout the city, then they're not going to activate as well, until we actually get in and repair the lines.
Having been familiar with sirens before, Larry, would, the battery backup will make them basically stand-alones? They can operate with wire cut, whatever they're sticking up. Long as they're in the air, they'll work.
Exactly.
With the power, main power, they won't.
Right. And as I said in my document, I don't know of historical time that it's happened. But I just wanted to be completely accurate and provide the council with all the information and the possibilities.
Dennis, let me, I want to make sure I've got clarity from your questions and their answers.
Well, I think, I think I understand.
Okay, okay.
I'm just trying to, I guess everything's got a price on it.
Anymore multimedia, though.
30 or 40 years, and, I mean, it's never happened.
I agree.
You seem awful expensive, and then the, the life is not very long either. You get a $3,500 battery, you only get three years. And anymore, you hear it on your cell phone before it even goes off.
There you go.
Sure. And that's, and cellphone apps, weather radios, local media, those are certainly the things that we strongly encourage people to utilize for warning, inside or out. But I just felt it was important enough to share with the council.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. I just, you got to put a price on everything. And as you said to me earlier, it's, it's like an insurance policy, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Do we roll the dice?
Well, we're dual-fed, so I, I mean, I think...
Any further discussion? Did we get a motion?
Motion to amend it, to, make a motion to amend it, to go back to the original.
Yeah. $11,066.02.
Councilman Elmore, we actually need a motion and a second on the floor before you can amend it.
Motion approved.
Got in trouble.
I have a second.
Second. Now you, now you.
Now I can motion to amend? Okay, I'll hear that. To the $11,000.
$66.02.
Thank you. For the non-batter.
Second. I will second, since you got through.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
White?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Council Bill 4085 is passed and is ordinance 5338. Council Bill 4086 deals with a contract with Lakleed Industries for nuisance weed abatement services. This is basically for vacant properties that's been abandoned and repossessed properties that nobody will mow. We're going to have them mowed by this one bidder, Lakleed Industries, and that's all we got, was one bid. If you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I think it's a great idea and a great use of our resources.
Very good price.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan? Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill 4086 has passed and becomes ordinance 5339. Council Bill 4087 deals with tourism grant and permission to receive same, which we do every year.
Motion approved.
Second.
Would you like to say?
Sure, I can answer any questions about it. The application was included in the packet, I noticed. The total this year will be, for the project is just over $63,000. We'll receive back 31 in reimbursements over the course of the year. And it helps provide for all of our, our marketing mix, television billboards, print ad, internet. Well, not everything, but a piece of each of our marketing mix. Any questions?
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Move on to second. Second to second. Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 4087 has passed and is ordinance 534. That concludes first and second readings. And there being no first readings, we move to all business of which I know of none. Anybody? And we move to comments from staff. Chief? Anything? Chief? Cruz? Attorney Cruz?
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to report on our online credit card services. As of today, we currently have 311 online members. We've had 256 payments taken online. We've, I've got percentages here as far as transactions. Our credit card transactions in our lobby, it's about 2% of our total transactions. Our phone credit card transactions are 1% of our total transactions and our web-based online payments are 3%. So currently, we have about 6% utilization. So.
Has that been a market?
We brought this information before you. We, we brought it to you with a 30% utilization and thinking that that would be a high mark. Well, we're at 6%. We're just about to end our marketing campaign. We're wearing our shirts and our buttons. We have one more online training this Wednesday evening from 5:00 to 6:00. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of other training sessions. We haven't had any participation, but we are offering that if anyone's willing to come and learn how to use online if they need a little bit of assistance.
And I'd like to congratulate you and your staff for the way that this was rolled out. I have, I have philosophical problems with something, the credit card use, but you all have done well. And thank you. Chris?
Two items. Number one, at your May 7 work session, I was going to give you a list of goals and objectives to be included in the budget. I would like you guys to kind of think through some of those based on the budget. But more importantly, I think it's important for you guys to give staff the goals and objectives that you want us to be accomplishing over the next 12 months. So that was something I was going to give you in advance to kind of look at and be discussing at the May 7 work session. The other thing is, as the mayor alluded, Jeff, Ben and I will be at our annual city managers conference next week, so that's where we'll be at. And on a positive note, I was elected to serve a two-year term on the city managers for the state board, so I will start that term starting this conference. So I'm excited about that. So other than that, any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does that not place you in the chain that moves you up through the chairs?
It could, yes, it does. So, any questions for me?
No, but I'd like to relay my congratulations also. Counsel. Mr. Wheeler.
No, sir.
Mr. Sharpe.
Work session is this?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Six. Seven.
Seventh of May, okay. Does anybody know?
6:30? Or is it six?
Six.
Six.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I had.
Mr. Elmore.
Guess I need to study up on Robert Trues.
On what?
Robert Trues.
It may be true that Robert says that, but we've never adopted Robert Trues. And doing so would require a parliamentarian, therefore I'm not in favor of doing so.
Then why did we base the case on that tonight?
Because generally, that's what we go by.
You heard nothing from me.
It's a standard.
You heard nothing from me that related to Robert Trues' authority. Right?
So disregard Robert Trues' authority.
No.
That would be my opinion, yes.
You can't do that, Mayor. We go, we go by Robert.
You gotta go by or you don't go by.
You have to. Because if not, we'd have no control.
We have no formal.
We have no formal.
As I say, I need to study up.
You can make it a cause to adopt Robert Trues' authority if you'd like.
I have a question for Chief Schneider. On the storm sirens, when they test, what all is involved with the testing? Because I think we had a tornado warning mid-March and I had an acquaintance that was at Easter. I think, I believe school was out when that tornado, but just barely out. But she was there with some tutoring students and she said she couldn't hear the sirens. So, I mean, is that part of the testing? Is you check to make sure everything, everybody that should be hearing them is hearing them? Or is it just to make sure they're working?
Whenever we test a siren, we send a crew, police department, fire department, as well as private industry partners that we have to every siren. And they make sure that they activate, sound and rotate. Every one of ours does that. This is a discussion we have periodically. They're not designed to be heard inside a building. Those people who live in close proximity to the siren are going to get that added benefit of hearing it when it's, when, inside their building. The school system does not rely on the storm sirens as their alerting system. We verified that with the school district over a year ago when we narrow banned the sirens and relocated some of them and took some of them down. If she's not able to hear inside the Easter elementary, that is not their primary form or function of warning for inside the schools.
But also during that, they didn't set them all off. They only set them off in certain...
No, all ours go off at one time.
Well, they didn't go off out at Jolly Barber either.
Now, that's on a different system.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
So if, if, if one storm siren is set off inside the city limits, they all are. So all 12 of them will go off at the same time, is providing it's, it's working properly.
Well, yeah, I'll tell her that. And it could be the fact that school was out and they didn't have any other formal, you know?
That could be.
Yeah. That she didn't know it was happening. You know when they go off.
Mr. White. Do you hear better? Did we make some changes over on the, over in your area?
In ours?
Yeah, we relocated one.
You can definitely hear them.
Yes. That's after we moved outside the house.
Yes, sir.
I had never asked.
And at Easter, you, you hear pretty loud there.
Had a question on...
I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
On the online billing, that, that is one method that we can control our cost for the utility department. Is that correct? Is online billing cheaper than sending out the bill?
No, I think you're talking about e-billing. That's different than the online payment. We have e-billing.
Okay, I wrote down online billing, but e-billing?
Yeah, e-billing. We have, currently, we have 565 customers signed up for e-billing. So yes, that is a reduction in our costs because we do not send out a paper copy and there's postage reduction. So yes, that is a cost savings.
So something citizens could do to help control costs is to switch over to e-billing if they're capable?
Yes, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Ben's been talking about storm sirens. The one you moved from across from my house, there's about a two-foot hole there. I keep waiting for Dennis to fall in it. That's all I've got, Mayor.
That's serious.
Mayor, I don't know if this is in compliance with Robert's rules of order, but I've got a suggestion that I would like to put forward. Sam, would you help me for a second?
Yes, sir.
Pass that over to Lena on the press and as far as it goes. I acknowledge the need for a rate increase for our utilities. We have a lot of problems in, I acknowledge the need for a rate increase in our utility department. We have a lot of problems. We have a lot of communication issues. And I've got something that I would like to at least have this group and our community consider. It's in several parts. We've already discussed and are well on the way to an electric utility rate analysis. There's a couple of components that I would like to add to that. I think it needs to include at least two meetings with whoever is chosen to be our consultant and that they actually come to work sessions and that those work sessions be publicized well enough in advance that the people that are visiting with us tonight can take part, hear the, the expert's analysis and, and address, and address their questions to him. I think that should happen on at least two occasions. I, I think we need an immediate 5% across the board increase. I think this fall, we could implement another 5% across the board increase. I keep hearing, well, I have been told by administration two years ago that we have $600,000 in deferred maintenance in the electric fund. These are things that we just ignored. And when you ignore things that deal with high-capacity currents, suddenly you begin to have dangerous and unstable systems. That needs to be addressed, that needs to be remedied, and that needs to be done now. That was two years ago. I don't have an estimate as to what needs to be done in today's dollars and in today's demands. But I think we need to spend some money in the electric department immediately for material supplies, poles, transformers, system upgrades. I, I don't mean to micromanage your department. I, I want you to tell us what you need to prioritize it. And I think this group has an obligation to make that available to you. And I, I would like to throw this out as something that I think this organization needs to give serious and prompt consideration to. Thank you.
Mrs. Herny.
10% increase would be a whole lot of money, but, okay. Can we have somebody give us an update on the YMCA in the pool? I've gotten several complaints about the quality of the pool since we spent three quarters of a million dollars in the black hole. That the quality of the pool is, the water, it's always, always bad. And when I say several, I mean people that go all the time.
Bring someone in.
Okay, thank you. And I want to say to our audience, not as big as last week, but thank you for coming. Really do appreciate it. Guys, keep coming.